And good morning. It's already been a fun morning. Welcome to the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners meeting for eighteen, or excuse me, August eighteenth, August eleventh, 2025 at nine AM. We'll go ahead and open this meeting and call it to order. Again, we have a full room this morning. Just want to thank everyone for their attendance as well. Just remind everybody of decorum of this chamber, and I would appreciate if you respect that decorum as we move forward in these proceedings. Before we get started, also, we've got some August birthdays. We'll recognize, wanted to recognize those. Our Vice Chairman Jones had a birthday recently, so just want to say happy birthday to you. And we'll recognize some other August birthdays later this month, so happy birthday. And I'm not going to sing. You don't want me to sing.
No, I don't.
All right. At this time, we'll go ahead and move to the invocation and the pledge. If you will go ahead, if you're able to rise, please rise. Heavenly Father, we gather today in service to the people of Cumberland County. We ask for your wisdom to guide our deliberations, your compassion to inform our decision, and your strength to help us serve with integrity. Grant us the wisdom to see clearly the needs for our community, the courage to make the difficult decisions when necessary, and the humility to work together for the common good. Bless the residents of Cumberland County, their families, the businesses, and their dreams for the future. Help us to be faithful stewards of the trust they have placed in us. We ask that you watch over our service members, our first responders, and all those who serve our community with dedication. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and move to item one, approval of the agenda. County Manager Greer, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Chairman Devi. There are no changes to the agenda.
Hearing no changes to the agenda, I'll entertain a motion. Vice Chairwoman Jones.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. There's a motion to approve the agenda as presented, and it's been properly seconded. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask for your vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move to item two, the consent agenda. County Manager Greer, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
No changes to the consent agenda.
Commissioners, are there any changes you wish for the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Vice Chairman Jones.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. It's been properly seconded. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move to item three, public hearings. County Manager Greer, I'll ask you to read the board rules and procedures for public hearings.
Yes, arguments by the proponents and opponents should be limited to a maximum of ten minutes per each side. If there's no group representative, each speaker will be allotted a maximum of three minutes until the ten-minute time period is attained. Rebottals will only be permitted at the discretion of the chairman with a maximum of one three-minute presentation by each side.
We'll go ahead and move to item A, draft 2025-2029 consolidation plan and 2025 annual action plan. County Manager Greer?
Yes, this is the annual CAPR plan. Ty Vault, Chief of Staff, interim Community Development Director, will present this item and answer any questions you may have.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Good to see you all this morning.
Good morning. And while we're getting that set up, just want to take a moment to recognize some folks in the audience. We have Sheriff Ennis Wright with us as well. He is here. And I also believe I see former Commissioner Charles Evans here as well. I don't think I see any other elected officials. If I did, I apologize while we're taking a break, while we're getting this uploaded. Good to have you both here.
I'm going to go ahead and get started while we're, this is my fault, so I changed something, so that's why. So I guess I'll get.
Go ahead.
But good morning again, Commissioners. So I'm before you this morning primarily to request that you hold a public hearing. That was noticed for this morning's meeting for the draft 2025-2029 consolidated plan and the 2025 annual action plan. But before, but before we, I ask you to open the public hearing, I would like to provide some general information about the process we go through in that consolidated plan and also provide a high-level overview of the funding allocations. So the consolidated plan is a required document that is completed by the county every five years. Some jurisdictions do it every three, we do it every five. However, the effectiveness of projects are evaluated on an annual basis through our CAPR process, which is our comprehensive annual performance and evaluation plan. And then each through, throughout that subsequent five-year term, we submit what's called annual action plans, which is kind of just bite-sized versions of the consolidated plan. But at the core of the planning process, we have citizen participation as well as consultation with our partner agencies, businesses, and nonprofits. So technically, we are already in the first year of our new consolidated plan period. Some of you may recall that I was before you April fifteenth last year making this very same presentation for the annual action plan. But due to us receiving our allocation letter in May of this year, we're a little bit delayed. And so our CAPR will be submitted on time this year, which is due ninety days after the end of the program year. So for us, that will be September thirtieth of this year. So it will, you'll see me again, and I will be presenting that CAPR before the end of September. We will also be engaging our various town halls, eight of our town halls in the next month and a half, to also engage them on that process. I'll be in Wade tomorrow evening at seven PM starting that process. So the consolidated plan is comprised of six main sections: the administrative setup section, an executive engagement summary, and the process, which outlines the methodology used to obtain information for the plan, and the needs assessment, which primarily draws the information compiled from the 2020 U.S. Census, the updated 2019 through 2023 annual, I'm sorry, American Community Survey, and the 2017 through 2021 Comprehensive Housing Affordability Strategy data. In this section, based on those objective data points, it is interpreted to ascertain what the needs are for the community based on those statistics. The various discussion narratives and summaries in this section marry that data together with information obtained through that process methodology. The market analysis reviews the local housing market, including supply, demand, condition, cost, and barriers for fair housing choice. The strategic plan sets the long five-year goal priorities for the target population and strategies to address identified needs. The consolidated plan also includes the performance period's first annual action plan, which outlines the specific project activities and funding allocations for the program year to meet those strategic plan goals. So in that annual action plan, which is basically at its most basic, it is one-fifth of the consolidated plan, basically. It outlines the allocation awarded to the jurisdiction for the program year and the goals scaled for the consolidated plan. The, the projects, the unit plans to undertake for that year, and the other sections draw on information directly obtained from the larger consolidated plan. On the screen, you can see the timeline that was followed to complete this plan. I initially prepared an RFP and released it in October 2024 to secure the services of a consultant, which has been the regular practice for the department in the past years, mainly due to the number of hours that it takes to procure, read, and interpret data. HUD estimates the hours to complete the consolidated plan for a jurisdiction of Cumberland County's size to be between three hundred and five hundred plus continuous hours. However, Cumberland County did not receive any responsive proposals for the RFP, and as a result, the decision was made to complete the plan in-house. And so department staff kicked off the consolidated plan period by meeting with the eight participating towns. And I appreciate the assistance of some of my staff over here. I have Ray Sean Emanuel, who's an accountant, and also Cedric Turner. Ray was really helpful in attending, apparently I'm only one person, I can't be in more, more than one place at a time. And so nights that I was in a town that I couldn't get to another town, Ray was there, Cedric was there, as well as our various stakeholder meetings that were set up over the last six months. Those were set up by Mr. Turner, so big thanks to them as well. In February, I released a community survey to solicit feedback from the community. I'm excited to tell you that that effort really paid off, and thank you to Diane and her team with PIO. We received three hundred and sixty-three completed surveys for that effort, which is the most in my memory that we've ever received for any type of plan like that with community development. So big thank you to Diane and her team for that as well. Also hosted and moderated many agency meetings to hear from our partner agencies and community stakeholders over the last six months, like I, like I mentioned, where we had very candid conversations regarding the state of our community as it relates to community development from their vantage point. And, and also with the 2025-2029 consolidated plan and 2025 annual action plan drafts, these were published and released on July fifteenth, and the public comment period officially begun, began. HUD requires that a public hearing be held during the public comment period, which again is why you're seeing me this morning. And there are many descriptive maps as well. If you look at the beginning of that plan, you'll see several very descriptive maps for the plan, and that's thanks to our ITS GIS manager, Dr. Hassan. Well, many of the men can really do anything with a map that you ask them to do, so. But big thank you to, to Hassan. So, so the county receives entitlement funding from HUD every year, which includes the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, the Home Investment Partnerships Program, or HOM. In order to use the CDBG funds, our projects must meet one of the following national objectives that you see on your screen. There are three of them: to principally benefit low- to moderate-income persons, to aid in the elimination of slum and blight, or to meet an urgent need. An urgent need would be something like a presidentially declared disaster. At least seventy percent of CDBG funds must be utilized to benefit LMI persons. Home funds are used to address housing-related activities, and we do this through partnerships with public and private entities. In order for the county to maintain its entitlement status, we must submit materials to HUD every three years to qualify as an entitlement community. And I engaged the councils of the eight participating town halls and was before you for the urban county designation this time last year as well to meet that requirement. Those materials include cooperation agreements that we have with eight of our nine municipalities excluding the city of Fayetteville. And this allows the county to include CDBG and HOM funds in each of those geographic areas. Otherwise, each municipality would have to apply for funding through the NC Department of Commerce, through rural development, through what's called balanced estate, and that is a competitive process. So during the planning process, five priority needs were identified: housing with the goal to improve, preserve, and expand housing for LMI persons and families living in Cumberland County; homelessness with a goal to improve the living conditions and support services and increase the availability of housing for unhoused persons and, and families in Cumberland County; and to eliminate unfair housing practices that may lead to homelessness; special needs with the goal to improve, preserve, and expand opportunities for persons with special needs and the disabled in Cumberland County; community development with the goal to improve, preserve, and create new public facilities, infrastructure, and public services to ensure the quality of life for all residents in Cumberland County; and economic development with a goal to increase and promote job creation, job retention, self-sufficiency, education, training, technical assistance, and economic empowerment for LMI residents in Cumberland County. So our expected funding allocation for program year 2025 for CDBG is $2,357,085.90, which may change slightly as end of year, program year 2024 expenditures are fully accounted for JV. That number includes our program year 2025 allocation, program income, and prior year carryforward. The total home allocation is $5,307,899.27, which also includes the 2025 allocation, program income, and prior year carryforward. And this amount also includes our home ARP funds, which we have a HUD-approved allocation plan for their use, its usage. For our continuing care COC grant, which are supportive housing programs, that totals $254,219. And though the annual, and through the annual budget process, the department requested $616,260, which includes CDBG funding match in general fund dollars. Other general funds, which are homeless initiative funds, are $161,784.59, of which is $200,000 less the cost of the HDMI software taken from the city of Fayetteville's portion of that allocation. Our estimated match is $939,402 for home, which brings the total estimated budget to $9,636,649. And to briefly summarize that a slightly different way, our grants total $7,494,205. Program income totals $425,000. And the estimated general fund and other sources total $1,717,447. And for anticipated projects for the upcoming year, for CDBG, we have $308,475. And for home, we have $486,316, totaling $794,791, with a goal of completing twenty-two housing rehabilitation projects. Our affordable housing projects, which include CDBG home and program income, also funding match, are estimated at $188,329. Housing project delivery, which encompasses staff costs, totals $267,945. Public services, which go, which goes to our, our service projects for our local nonprofits, $102,040. Homeless services, which aids our supportive housing programs, $651,589. Public facilities, $85,000. Demolition clearance, $15,000. Economic development, $25,000. Housing purchase, $25,000. And our total general administration and planning, $636,200. And at this point, I would normally show you all a montage of before and after photos that we've done in the last program year, but in the interest of time, I just offer the board, the, our availability as department to share those photos and stories with you at any time that you might request them. And I'll do my best to answer any questions that you have, but I ask that you would open up that public hearing.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Vault, appreciate the hard work that you and your department do on, on this. I was looking through the information you provided, and I see that there's an annual action plan summary that y'all do every year. I know y'all have ninety days after the end of the fiscal year to provide that, so I'm, I'm really looking forward to FY25. But my question for you is this: on the consolidated plan that's every five, do y'all go back and do a KPI or, or look at what kind of performance metrics you've reached? I see you got some, some goals here over the five-year, but instead of just doing it every year, do you go back and look at the, the five years in total?
Yes, sir. And we can be more intentional about having a sep, a actual five-year consolidated plan KPI. What we do typically, as you stated, we have the bite-sized one-fifth every year where we're kind of level-setting on an annual basis of, hey, did we meet this goal? And then it informs how we set up our goals for the following year. But I think it would be a, a great suggestion to provide a KPI for the entire performance period. So for us, that would be 2020 through 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Just one comment from me. Just, just want to make sure that as we continue to move forward with this, that we look for ways to collaborate with the city's department. They receive the bulk of the additional funds in our county, and I think it's important that we maximize the use of those funds collectively.
Yes, sir.
As I know, I know we do that. We look forward to having conversations around that. At this time, we'll go ahead and open the public comment period. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
At this time, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period. Commissioners, are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Vice Chairwoman Jones?
Yes, I make a motion that we move to through the 2025-2029 consolidation plan and the 2025 annual action plan for submission to HUD.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion that's been properly seconded to approve the 2025-29 consolidated plan and 25 annual action plan for submission to HUD. Are there any questions on this motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote on the motion to approve the consolidated action plan and annual action plan. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. We'll go ahead and move to item four, items of business. We'll move to item A, consideration of franchise for operations of Courthouse and DSS Deli. First reading.
Yes, Heather Skeens, Assistant County Manager, will present this item and answer any questions that you may have.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am before you for the consideration of the franchise for operation of
for operation of Courthouse and DSS Deli. We are required to have two readings for this franchise agreement. This is the first required reading. Mr. and Mrs. Lee have been in partnership with the county since 2008, operating Happy Deli at the Courthouse and at DSS. If the board approves, staff are recommending the second reading be placed on the August 25th board meeting for approval to enter into this franchise agreement for three years.
Commissioners, any questions on this item? Hearing none, that satisfies the first reading, so we can go ahead and move the item forward to its second reading.
Yes.
All right, we'll go ahead and move to item B, unhoused support center updates. County Manager Greer?
Yes, Assistant County Manager Heather Skeens will present this item and introduce any representatives here from LS3P, Bar &amp; Bar, and Metfau and Construction.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
We have a joint presentation to provide a high-level overview of the unhoused support center and Phase One deliverables. You do have the PowerPoint presentation in front of you. With me are Bob Presley and Dean Rains from LS3P, and Jonathan Best and Maxwell Stances from Bar &amp; Bar Construction. Phase One deliverables in the LS3P contract are quantify space, identify success factors, and create a vision, including community feedback and engagement and conceptual renderings. We've presented the success, the success factors and community feedback in prior meetings through red and green dot exercises, feedback from the community, and with the prior advisory committee. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Bob to go through the presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First, let me thank you for having LS3P here this morning. We recognize as the architect of this project the importance of it to Cumberland County and the community. And with that, we are pleased to be partnered with you to make this project a reality. Again, my name is Bob Presley. I'm the project manager from LS3P. To my right is Dean Rains, lead designer from LS3P. I assure you, though, it's just the two of us, and then we have Max and Jonathan behind me from Bar &amp; Bar, the construction manager at Risk. It's been contracted to Cumberland County for this project as well. And I assure you why it's just the, you know, a few of us up here. There's a host of people behind us at LS3P and our consultant group that is responsible for the work you're going to see today. So this is a graphic that depicts the timeline. And as you can see, the, we are here, kind of indicates that we're really wrapping up what we show as Phase One, or what we refer to as our programming and visioning. I'll come back to that in a minute. We still have in front of us really the bulk of our work, which is Phase Two. And that's going to include schematic design, design development, construction drawings. I mention this only so you can see that what you're going to see today is still very, very early in the process. Will likely change as we go through the process. But as the name implies, we really start with programming, because we need to understand the budget as it relates to the size of building that can be realized with that budget. And then what that means as far as what can go into the building, as far as the number of beds, support spaces, and so forth. Visioning, the slides you're going to see today really represent hundreds of hours of effort from meetings such as community engagement meetings to working with the unhoused subcommittee meeting, committee, to work sessions with the advisory committee. So again, you're going to see a few slides today, but I assure you, behind them are hundreds of hours of effort. So we're going to start with the project budget. We've been directed that this project has a total project cost of $17 million. So when we think about that, that's really an all-in cost. And that, so you have the hard cost, which is the actual building cost, which we are totaling an estimated cost of work of $13,949,215. We include contingency, trying to be conservative as best we can. And then soft costs. Soft costs include furniture, fixture, equipment, telephones, computers, you know, anything. We joke that if you turned the building upside down and shook it, it would fall out. It also includes design fees, civil engineering fees, permitting fees, and so forth. So we believe we can confidently stand in front of you today with a total project cost and believe we can realize a 24,000-square-foot building. Again, we are trying as best we can to be conservative with these numbers. We've been working closely with Bar &amp; Bar. These are actually numbers that they have provided. But we've worked in tandem with them to, again, have a high level of confidence and, and again, a bit conservatism in these numbers to make sure that when we start construction, this is the actual budget. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dean to talk about the program.
Thanks, Bob. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the program, as Bob mentioned, is strictly adhered to the budget. So we're looking at 24,000 square feet. And at a high level, we're breaking out down into public spaces, meaning the entry space, public use spaces like dining, education, kitchen, storage, and then private spaces, what we call private spaces, but they're really like staff spaces, mechanical, back-of-house stuff. And then the majority of the program is devoted to sleeping areas. And that is broken, subbroken into family, men's, and women's. So you can see, we have 24,000 square feet. And if you look at the numbers for the bed count, we achieve 100 beds between the men, women, isolation, and a family private space. Now, this, this counts for bunk beds and single-use beds. Diving into the site, this is the site off of Holly Lane. There's a lot of technical information here, but generally, the grayed-out area you see on the right, that's Fayetteville Community School, Technical School. The red line indicates the floodplain that we are to not encroach on. The blue line is our site. So that encompasses four pieces of property now that has some parking and some residential use on that. So the intent is to put the building on the north part of the site and to try to maximize the existing parking level that we have on the south portion of it. The green area, the green line indicates some utilities easements as we devote. Now, the fun part, right? The, so the, we're going to have two options here that we wanted to present to you on the concept. So the first one takes the program, divides it into two intersecting bars on the north side of the site. And what this does is it allows the larger, taller bar that faces Holly Street to be perpendicular to it. So there's, there's a nice civic presence on that. However, the entry point is off of the south parking area to allow for some visual privacy as you enter. This arrangement also allows for various exterior courtyards to service the needs of the users and staff. Move on to the next portion. So this is kind of diving into what the interior layout would be at a conceptual level. So the blue area indicates the warm, welcoming entry point for all of the users and staff. E, the orange, is for the dining for users. G is kind of the core building space for staff, back-of-house sort of thing. And then A, on the top, that's the men's sleeping area. And then D and H to the right, that would be the women's and family. And then the respective courtyards connecting that, those spaces on the, on the upper portion in the right. Again, parking to the south. Wanted to show you, the, these are just conceptual images. So this is our first take after many iterations of what the intersecting form concept could look like, using more materials such as masonry, stone, and wood. And then you can kind of see that there's a little peak of the entry point there, but the majority of the glass is facing south. So as you approach it from the parking or approach it through bikes or pedestrian, you get, you get a sense of nice, transparent, welcoming space going into that intake area. The second concept takes the program and uses courtyard concept. So we take a, basically a rectangle, carve it out. Those respective courtyards would support the family, the men's and women's. Again, the entry point would still be on the south. And then it would be, sleeping areas would be separated by the education and dining space, which is shown on this plan as E in the middle. So D and H on the upper, that would be the women, that would be the women's and family. And then A would be the men's dorm on the south portion of it, again with the entry point and staff represented by J and G. And then this concept takes a different approach, where you have more glass kind of surrounding the entire welcoming area. And then the masonry-enclosed support spaces and dorm spaces would be, would have large overhangs that are angled to allow light to come in to various portions of the building. And then that's our summary. I'm going to turn it back to Bob.
So in conclusion, again, I just wanted to bring this slide back up and reiterate that we are still very early in our process. As we mentioned, what we just presented, really we consider to be the deliverables for Phase One. The next phase two, as I mentioned, is really where we get into the bulk of our work. And so again, what you saw today, as far as imagery or potential plans, or just that, they're very early. They will likely and may change as we go through the design process. But we felt it was important to conclude this process showing some imagery and, as Dean said, sort of the fun stuff. So with that?
So we'll certainly take any questions now regarding the PowerPoint presentation, or I can move forward with our request.
So Commissioners, just as a frame of reference, so we wanted to bring this back to the entire board based on us not having met in July, and the, the team, the project team was ready to bring this back. This will still go back to the unhoused support committee for, for further details and look. But we thought it was important, based on timing and the importance of this, to go ahead and get visibility to the entire board based on some requirements that we have and the ask of the, the staff that they need to move forward for August and continued operations. So with that in mind, I'll open it up for any questions. Commissioner Adams, I think you had a question?
I'll just come back, because it was on a little bit of the area. So if that's all we do in the day, I'll just hold mine for now. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the pleasure of serving on the unhoused center board, along with our vice chair, who chairs that committee. And, you know, I think this is a very important project for our community. I think we can all recognize that. I'm going to reiterate the same concerns that I had at the committee level, is that, you know, when we're taking on a new project of this manner and this scope, it's important that this board do its due diligence and its research and really gathers and gets the information that we need to make a, an informed decision. I think there's still a lot of questions about how this particular project moves forward as it relates to who's going to facilitate services in the facility? Is it going to be private facilitation versus county-administered? I think that's a question that needs to be asked and answered by this board. Also, you know, we've got our partners over at the city that have a very similar facility. So, you know, are we working with them to transition from that facility? Or is both facilities going to remain in Congress once this goes forward? So, you know, I think this is a much-needed project, and it's very important that this board gets this right before we just move forward on spending our residents' dollars on this project, Mr. Chairman. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Tyson. Other comments before we move to a motion? Vice Chairwoman Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to state, and I want to remind everyone that, as, as he stated, let me also say that we have Commissioner Patel. I appreciate both Commissioner Patel and also Commissioner Tyson for serving on this particular committee. And I just want to encourage and let our community know that the reminder is, when we do have our unhoused center, that the primary goal will be, definitely, we want to promote stability and sufficiency. But the primary goal is, while the individuals, whichever route we go, are there, this is just that temporary. Our goal is to make sure that transitional housing becomes permanent, to help them while they're there with case management services, resources in that of, of which if they are in need of substance abuse or mental health needs. And this is important to know, because it is just that transitional. This is not going to be a center where individuals come in or stabilize there. But it will be a center in reference to, we understand that the unhoused population, they have challenges, and they're in need of assistance, everything from job placement, from education. So I just want to make sure that we understand that the primary overall goal is to help those and need to have a hand up. We will have partners to help us do this. So I just want to make sure, again, that we all are in the same alignment. A lot of questions, as reiterated, as Commissioner Tyson said, do need to be flowed through our committee, of which they will be. And we will do our due diligence to work together to assure that our unhoused, you know, population, as well as our community, are making sure that nobody's left behind. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Any other comments, Commissioners? Ms. Skeens, what's the request of the staff?
The contract with LS3P that we currently have is for Phase One and Two deliverables. We are recommending that the board accept the presentation and authorize staff to move forward with Phase Two deliverables. Additionally, Bar &amp; Bar's contract ends in December of 2025. We are recommending that the contract proposal, which was attached to your agenda item, be approved to extend the contract and that we will bring a contract amendment, a formal contract amendment, will be brought forward for the, the board's approval also.
Hearing no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion from Vice Chairwoman Jones.
Yes, I make a motion that we accept and approve Phase One deliverable presented by LS3P, and that we also approve Bar &amp; Bar contract extension for one year.
Second.
We've got a motion to accept the Phase One deliverables as presented and approve the contract extension for Bar &amp; Bar. It's been properly seconded. Are there any questions on this motion or comments? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote to accept and approve the Phase One deliverables and approve the Bar &amp; Bar contract extension for one year. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Council, Vice Chairwoman Jones, Chairman DeBiere, Commissioner Patel, Commissioner Faircloth, and Commissioner Adams. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Tyson.
Ms. Skeens, thank you for bringing this forward. And just as a reminder, you know, this project was paused in November of last year by staff. And I appreciate the, the work to revisit the scope, the original purpose of this, and make some of the modifications that you've made to deliver Phase One based on bed size, but more importantly, cost, as well as the actual footprint of the building. So thank you for that and getting this project back on track.
Thank you.
We will go ahead and move to item C, consideration of solid waste transfer station construction contract.
Yes, this contract, back in April, May, March, April time period, we issued, you approved the bids for the solid waste transfer station. Amanda Lee? Amanda Lee will present this item and discuss any questions you may have.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to present the long-awaited contract for the transfer station. We have been through a couple of different bid processes, but we are very excited to come today to award the contract to O'Connor. The contract consisted of three, well, the base bid and two alternates. The base bid was for the transfer station itself. Alternate one was for pit scales, and alternate two was for a fire main. The total contract amount is for $5,463,344. And we are asking that you approve this contract in that amount and that we authorize the chairman to execute the contract. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Lee? Commissioner Faircloth, you're recognized.
I don't have a question, but I would like to ask Ms. Lee if she would explain what a transfer station is. A lot of people listen. This is not, this is, excuse me, this is not buses and trains.
That's right.
Correct.
This is solid waste.
Yes, this is for solid waste.
Thank you, Commissioner Faircloth.
So where we are now with our landfill, we have less than six years' capacity left. In fact, we have a date that we will close the Ann Street facility in 2031 at the current rate of filling. So we are constructing, we have permitted, we have the permit to construct from NCEQ a transfer station. We went through an environmental justice initiative where we talked with citizens about placing this transfer station at Ann Street. The purpose of the transfer station is it will be a large facility where... The purpose of the transfer station is it will be a large facility where collector trucks come to deposit waste, where now they put it on the landfill, they would be depositing on a concrete floor. We will scoop it up with heavy equipment from the concrete floor and place it in tractor trailers. Those tractor trailers will take it to the Sampson County landfill. Sampson County landfill will soon close, and so we will take advantage of the airspace at Sampson County while we have time. Meanwhile, we are currently transferring waste from our bail field. That waste goes in tractor trailers to Sampson County now. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Tyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we approve the construction contract with O'Connor Company of North Carolina in the amount of $5,463,344, and authorize the chairman to execute a tax contract that has been audited and determined to be legally sufficient.
Second.
We've got a motion to approve the construction contract and authorize the contract signature. It's been properly seconded. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote for the approval of the construction contract for the, with O'Connor Company in the amount of 5.4 million, and authorize chairman to execute the attached contract. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. We'll now move to Item D, ratification of contracts with L&amp;L Drywall and Construction, Inc., and S Core Technologies of NCLLC. County Manager Greer?
Yes, Rick Morfield, County Attorney, will present this item and discuss any questions you may have.
Good morning, board members. This is a sort of a cleanup of some stuff, a couple of contracts that were just not fully compliant with our internal system back in the last fiscal year, but the work had begun and has been ceased. And the first one is L&amp;L Drywall and Construction, Inc. It is for the renovation project of the restrooms at the Crown Coliseum, over $800,000. The low bid, they were the low bidder, and that low bid was accepted by the board March the 5th, 2025. For some reason, it just didn't get back, the contract was never brought back to the board, and that was the issue. That amount required, under our policy, requires that it be approved by the board and signed by the board chair after approval. But that, it was very crucial that that work be done at the same time as the other renovation that's going on at the Crown, which is ongoing now, should be wrapping up within the next month. But, and the second one was, is the, let's say, a much smaller contract, it's $105,000. The board approved, and that was for upgrades to the security system cameras and stuff at the Ann Street landfill. That was also the low bid, it was, that low bid was accepted by the board April the 7th, 2025. It was, it should have been brought back to the board and signed by the chair. It was signed by the chair by electronic fixture, but the contract itself was not taken back. And had email communication with all the boards, so June, board members, July 1st, just to recommend that the board accept, be willing to accept the approval of those low bids as acceptance of the contract, and to move this forward to this first meeting and take action to ratify the actions that have already been taken. And the motion that I have presented at the end recovers this completely. What I'm asking the board to do is to ratify the board's prior approval of the low bids as approval of the contract and approval of the board to sign the contracts and for the work to progress. And that, if the board satisfied with that, it would, if the motion is set forth fully.
Commissioners, questions on the two contracts for Attorney Morfield? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Patel?
Thank you. At this time, I'll make a motion to approve, to ratify the former actions taken by the board to accept the low bids in the contract with L&amp;L Drywall and Construction, Inc., for the renovation of restrooms in the Crown Coliseum in the amount of $835,363. And as long with the contract with the S Core Technologies of North Carolina LLC for upgrades to the security system for the Ann Street landfill in the amount of $105,000 as approval of the contracts and as authorization for the chair to sign each.
There's a motion on the floor to ratify the two contracts and approve the chair to sign. It's been properly seconded. Are there any questions on this motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote on this motion. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and now move forward to Item E, consideration of appointment of sheriff to fulfill the unexpired term of Sheriff Ennis Wright due to his retirement effective June 30, 2025. Let me provide some background on that. I know the clerk would present this item, but let me provide some background on this First, the Board of Commissioners was notified of the retirement of Sheriff Wright effective June 30, 2025. Under North Carolina General Statute, the Board of Commissioners shall appoint a person to fill the unexpired term of a sheriff who has resigned. The qualifications of a person must possess to be elected or appointed sheriff as set forth in the North Carolina Constitution. This board developed a process to consider any individual interested, a process that was followed previously, individual interested in being appointed as a sheriff of Cumberland County. The public was notified that Commissioners would accept letters of interest, including resumes and required supporting documents until 5:00 PM on August 4, 2025. As of this deadline, the following nine individuals have submitted documentation regarding their interest in serving as sheriff for Cumberland County. Joseph Baylor, James Barnes, James Black, Kimberly Brayden, Brian Delarosio, Jonathan Morgan, Terry Ray, Ronald Starling, and LaRue Wyndham. A couple actions that will happen by this board, so we understand the process by law and what we are required to do. What you will hear is you will hear that we will appoint an individual to serve as a sheriff for the unexpired term, which ends in 2026 in December. We will approve a bond, a surety bond for the new sheriff that is appointed, and we will establish a salary for that sheriff effective the date of the appointment. Understand, the salary that is set by the Commissioners, that's required by law, the process this board went through is, we did a comparative market analysis with our HR Director to ensure we understood the ranges. We also looked at the current classifications within the Sheriff's Department as well in how that would fit. So, when you see them, when you hear a motion, it will contain the three items. As we move forward this morning, we will ask the applicants to address the board if they would like, and if they are here. You'll be given five minutes to speak, and the board will not ask any questions. The chair will not entertain any questions of the board for each of the individuals. I will ask the clerk to read the applicants in order. Again, I'd ask that you have, you take five minutes, we'll have a timer. I ask that you be respectful of that, and as additionally, I would ask the audience that is here in the chambers, as I mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, I'd ask that you are respectful of all of the participants and all of the applicants, and I'd ask that you be respectful of the decorum of this chamber at all times. At this time, hearing no questions from the Commissioners, I will go ahead and ask the clerk to bring the first applicant.
Joseph Baylor?
Morning, esteemed Commissioners.
Good morning.
Fellow citizens. My name is Joseph Baylor. I've come here before you today with immense respect for your solemn responsibility to bear in selecting the next sheriff for Cumberland County. As requested, you have received my letter of intent, resume, and background check, which I trust reflects my qualifications and dedication. Cumberland County is not just where I serve, it's my home. My family's journey began, excuse me, began here with my father, a Vietnam veteran, who chose to retire in this community after serving his nation across the globe. Following in his footsteps, after retiring from the United States Army Military Police, I too returned to Cumberland County to draw, because of the draw of the spirit and the people. I am asking to be appointed as the sheriff because I possess profound desire to protect and serve this community, not because I'm bored or seeking to escape any scrutiny, but because I am driven by the commitment of safety and well-being. As the sheriff, I will not only protect and serve the community, but also rigorously apply the core principles instilled in me during my service in the military, specifically in the military police corps. Loyalty, I will be loyal to my subordinates within the sheriff's office, to the community as a whole, upholding the law, ensuring the safety and security of every resident of Cumberland County. Duty, my duty is to maintain order within the department and throughout Cumberland County. I am committed to being responsible, dependable, and willing to carry out my duties as sheriff, even under the most challenging circumstances. Respect, respect for authority, respect for the residents, and respect for the law is paramount. I will treat all individuals with dignity and fairness, regardless of their status within the community. Selfless service, I will consistently put the needs of the department and the community before my own, ensuring the morale and success of these, I lead, and overall well-being of our citizens. Honor, I will uphold the highest ethical standard, acting with integrity in all my actions. I will not engage in any form of dishonesty, corruption, abusive authority. Personal courage, I'm willing to face danger and adversity, both physically and morally. I will stand up for what is right when it's difficult or unpopular. Furthermore, additional core values instill me through the military police, decisiveness in stressful situations, unwavering professionalism, and the crucial empathy will guide my leadership and the actions of the sheriff's office. Above all, I want to emphasize that I will welcome and actively seek oversight from you the Commissioners, as well as from the citizens of Cumberland County. Transparency and accountability are not just buzzwords, they are foundational to building and maintaining trust. Commissioners, the decision before you is critical. It's about leadership that will safeguard our homes, protect our children, and uphold the rule of law with honor and distinction. I humbly ask for your vote to serve as the next sheriff, committed to truly serving and protecting our beloved community. Thank you sincerely for this opportunity and your diligent consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Baylor. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the next applicant.
James Barnes.
Good morning, board members.
Good morning.
James Barnes, recently moved back, two years ago retired from Department of Homeland Security. Saw the opportunity to serve my community and bring all of my federal experience here to this county to protect the members of the county and any visitors or future individuals that choose to move to this community and try to make this community a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next applicant?
James Black.
Good morning, Commissioners and citizens.
Good morning.
My name is James Black, but most people know me as Jimmy Black. Law enforcement extends back to earliest of human civilization. The Office of Sheriff dates back to the 10th century or even before in England, and the original sheriffs were known as chariots. Chariots were in charge of typhings. There were groups of persons over the age of 12 that the chariots supervised to provide protection of the sheriff. The chariot played a big part in the formation of law enforcement in America. The modern-day sheriff is not only responsible for the enforcement of laws in our state, but the sheriff now is responsible for running a county jail, service of civil processing, and courthouse security. As a deputy sheriff, as a former deputy sheriff, I am probably one of the few that are qualified or have experience in all four of these areas. I have several years' experience as a jailer, where I served as a, you know, working the floor and as an assistant shift leader. But however, most of my career was spent in the enforcement section of the sheriff's office. I was a patrol officer, I got promoted to a detective, I served in the juvenile section, was then promoted to a sergeant, where I served in the special operations unit. I served as a supervisor in the narcotics unit, I served as a detective in the major crimes unit, and after serving in the major crimes unit for several years, I were promoted to lieutenant, where I supervised property crime, again, major crimes and homicide. I left the sheriff's office briefly and went to the Cumberland County school system as Director of Security and Safety. Hailed this position for approximately three years, and Sheriff Butler came to me and asked me to come back to the sheriff's office in full-time position. I came back to the sheriff's office as a captain, I was assigned to the services division, and I was later promoted to a major. As a supervisor, as captain and major in the services division, I had the opportunity to supervise courthouse security and the civil office and the service of civil processes. I was born and raised in Cumberland County, attended school here. I am 62 years old, I married Karen Black, she's a former CIO for the State of North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. I graduated from Southview High School in 1981. I then went to Fayetteville State University, where I received a BA degree in political science, police science, excuse me. I attended North Carolina State University at, under the AOP program, which is Administrative Officers Management Program, that is a school for high-ranking law enforcement officers. It teaches them to be chiefs and sheriffs. I hold a North Carolina Criminal Investigator Certificate from the North Carolina Justice Academy. I have numerous other schools and certificates in the areas of law enforcement, including homicide investigation, hostage negotiation, drug investigations, et cetera. I am currently employed with Cumberland County still as a school teacher at Kateborough High School, where I teach law and justice. I'm also helping develop a new drone technology program within Cumberland County schools, which we know now is a big part in first response. I hold my part, a 107 FAA pilot's license in the area of drone technology. I think my background speaks for itself, and I would like to have the opportunity to be considered for the job of sheriff here in Cumberland County. It's been a lifelong dream. I was raised basically in the sheriff's office. My grandfather, Sheriff Clark, were very good friends. I remember as a little boy riding around in Sheriff Clark patrol car, he had a white station back with two blue lights on each side. He was good friends with Otis Jones, who gave me my first job with the sheriff's office. I worked for three different sheriffs, Jones, Bessel, and Butler. I enjoyed every bit of my time as a deputy sheriff with Cumberland County, and I would like to serve again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Before we move to the next applicant, I just want to make sure, recognize our registrar of deeds, Registrar Brüllington is here as well. Thank you for being here, ma'am. Madam Clerk, if you'll go ahead and call the next applicant.
Kimberly Brayden.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today about my qualifications for this appointment. My name is Kim Brayden, and for nearly 30 years, I have served as a police officer with the City of Fayetteville, most recently as the Chief of Police. My entire adult life has been in service to this community as a law enforcement My entire adult life has been in service to this community as a law enforcement professional. I've been tested in this profession. I've served in every rank and capacity from patrol officer to chief. I've led specialized units, I've survived being shot, I've mourned the death of close friends killed in the line of duty. I've managed multiple critical incidents with transparency and accountability. I possess the moral courage to make ethical decisions no matter the circumstance. I know what it means to walk the thin blue line, and I know what it takes to lead others down that path. I envision a Sheriff's Office that embodies public service and leads our community both formally and informally with competence, compassion, and consistent approaches focused on the following. Number one, responding swiftly and effectively to calls for service, providing a victim-focused response. Number two, conducting thorough investigations that support meaningful prosecutions and help mitigate crime. Number three, efficient and effective management of jail operations to ensure a safe and secure environment for both employees and detainees. Number four, partnering with community-based organizations, nonprofit organizations, and public agencies to address the underlying issues of crime within our community. Five, nurturing a professional culture of service and accountability throughout the entire staff and making the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office the premier law enforcement agency within our region. Collaboration with all law enforcement agencies in Cumberland County to ensure a unified approach to public safety. And implementation of effective recruiting strategies, professional development of existing staff, and the retention of all Sheriff's Office employees. As a candidate, I bring the experience of leading a nationally accredited law enforcement agency, managing nearly 700 employees with an operating budget of nearly $65 million. Not only did I lead the Fayetteville Police Department for two years, but as a team, we achieved the two lowest years in crime in the past decade, more specifically, the two lowest years for violent crime in over a decade. As the Chief of Police, I worked with City Council on a comprehensive pay plan that addressed issues with recruitment and retention within the department. I'm ready to work towards similar goals and seek similar results at the county level. I'm confident I possess the knowledge, skills, and ability to lead the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office, but even more important than my experience in the field of law enforcement is the fact that I know this community. I grew up here, I raised my family here, my friends are here, and I've spent my entire career walking the streets of this community, working with all members of our community to improve the quality of life for all residents. If given the opportunity to serve as Sheriff, I'll keep doing what I've always done, showing up, listening, and leading with integrity. Again, thank you for this opportunity to speak publicly about my qualifications for the appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Braden. Madam Clerk, will you call the next applicant?
Brian Del Rosario.
Call it one more time.
Brian Del Rosario.
Madam Clerk, please move to the next applicant.
Commissioners, manager, staff, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jonathan Morgan, it's honored to speak to you today about a calling I've dedicated my life to, serving our community through law enforcement. At its core, law enforcement is a profession of service. It's about working hand-in-hand with the community we serve, built on trust and mutual respect. Growing up in a small rural community, my family taught me the importance of helping others, whether it's assisting neighbors on their farms or lending a hand without being asked, I learned that service is not something you can be called to, it's something you live. I've worked my way from road patrol deputy to major of operations. I've worked in every sworn division within the Sheriff's Office. Presently, I supervise the largest division within the Sheriff's Office, consisting of 149 personnel across 10 sections. I'm fortunate and blessed to have served and learned under the leadership of Sheriff Earl Moose Butler and Sheriff Ennis Wright. I promise you and the citizens of Cumberland County I'll continue in our tradition of service. If appointed Sheriff, my vision is to lead the Sheriff's Office into a new era focused on public safety, community trust, and strong partnerships. My priorities will be first, recruitment and retention. Law enforcement agencies across the country are facing challenges in hiring and retaining qualified deputies. Every citizen deserves to know the confidence that help will be there when it's needed most. We will build on success of Sheriff Wright's Training Academy and launch new efforts to attract and keep top talent. Second, community outreach. I believe in strong relationships with deputies and the citizens we serve. We will expand our outreach through educational programs, neighborhood events. Being present, being engaged, that's how we build lasting trust. Partnerships. Crime does not, third, partnerships. Crime does not stop at city or county lines. I commit to strengthening partnerships with neighboring agencies, mental health providers, educators, and community leaders. Together, we can deliver the coordinated response our community deserves. Being Sheriff is not only about enforcing a law, it's about leadership and service and a deep-rooted commitment to our county. As Sheriff, I will work to ensure a safer community for every resident, a supportive professional environment for every employee, and a strong transparent relationship with this board and community partners. Upon his retirement, Sheriff Wright honored me with his endorsement to succeed him as Sheriff. I'm deeply grateful for his trust and humbled by his recommendation. Today, I respectfully ask for his board's approval of Sheriff Wright's recommendation to fill the remainder of his elected term. I'm ready to move forward with all of you, working together to protect, connect, and strengthen Cumberland County for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Madam Clerk, will you call the next applicant?
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity this morning to come and speak with you. My name is Terry Ray, and I am seeking the appointment for Cumberland County Sheriff. I am a lifelong resident of Cumberland County, I live just outside of Hope Mills, my parents and my burnt grandparents are from this area as well. In 1993, I started my career at the age of 21, serving the citizens of Cumberland County. I retired from the Sheriff's Office with 30 years of service at the end of 2021. While I still taught instruction at FTCC, I felt that I still had more to do. Towards the end of 2022, Sheriff Wright asked me to come back and work part-time at the Training Center, which I gladly accepted. For two and a half years, I assisted the Training Center with instruction in BLAT and worked with deputies throughout the Sheriff's Office on firearms training. I enjoyed my time at the Training Center, but on July 30th of 2025, I was released because my services were no longer required. I'm still employed with FTCC as an instructor with the BLAT program. Nevertheless, I'd like to briefly tell you why I am the best person for Sheriff's of Cumberland County. Let me first say, I love the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office and the people who serve there. I will bring a smooth transition to the employees of the Sheriff's Office, providing a positive work environment, encouraging professional development. I have more knowledge and experience of the Sheriff's Office inner workings than any other person seeking this appointment. I've been an instructor since 2000. For the last 25 years, I've had the privilege of training almost every deputy inside the Sheriff's Office. Let me say the Sheriff's Office has talented, educated, and loyal employees who serve the citizens of Cumberland County. They are capable of great things under the right leadership. During my career, I have worked in three of the four divisions within the Sheriff's Office, the Patrol Division, the Detective Division, and finally, in the Services Division. I've also worked jointly with emergency management, with their communications, their dispatch, and their radio programming, as well as the EOC whenever it opened up for natural disasters such as hurricanes and flooding. I've worked well with other county offices, with engineering, doing capital improvement projects, the sign shop, the print shop, heating and air, plumbing, carpentry shop. I've also worked with outside law enforcement agencies, local, state, and federal. But this appointment is not about what I have done, but is what I intend to do. Cumberland County deserves a Sheriff who understands the Sheriff's Office and how it operates. Cumberland County deserves a Sheriff who will lead with integrity, communicates with transparency, and invests in people and progress. If entrusted with this office, I will continue modernization of operations. I will strengthen community engagement, launch programs to build trust with residents, and prioritize youth outreach. I will advance training and professionalism by developing the next generation of law enforcement professionals with world-class instruction, mentorship, and accountability. Now, the Sheriff's Office is not a police office, police department. The Sheriff's Office is responsible for much more than just traditional policing. It is responsible for the detention center, for the courthouse, civil process, but it's also responsible for sex offender registration. I will ensure physical responsibility, maximizing every dollar in our budget, fleet management to capital improvements. Uphold accreditation and reform, maintain Kalia Gold standards, compliance while reforming policies to reflect the evolving needs of our county. I will repair the damage with other agencies on the local, state, and federal level. I will continue to provide and lead by inspiring, adapting, and proving that honesty and integrity do matter. The Sheriff's Office must be proactive and not reactive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Madam Clerk, will you call the next applicant?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm a little underdressed. There's not much more I can say that everybody else hasn't already said. The thing is, you have my resume, served in the military as a first sergeant. For those that have been in the military, understand what a first sergeant does. Commander gives the authority, and he makes sure it's taken out. A lot of these people in here I have worked with before. My civilian career started with the Cumberland County Sheriff's Department, and I've seen some changes, some that have been good, some I believe may not have been good. One thing I believe we've gotten away from is working with the community, and I have to agree with Mr. Ray, we need to be proactive, not reactive. But engage with the community, get out and talk with them. That's one of the things I always encouraged the people when I was a supervisor with Cumberland County. You're in a community, and you see somebody out there, stop and talk to them. They're not violating the law. If they don't want to talk to you, they don't want to talk to you. If the people feel trusted around you, they will give you information to help curb any type of criminal activity that's going on. So all I can say is that if I am so fortunate to get this position, it is not my intent to run for office, it's just to fill outgoing sheriff's position and let it be a level playing field for the citizens of this community to pick who they want. As you know, somebody that's in office usually is an incumbent, unless they really messed up, they have an advantage. So I want to level the playing field out, but I want to see Cumberland County Sheriff's Department to go ahead and expand the way it is, but get back working with the people. With that, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starling. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the next applicant?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hope everybody's doing well, had a good weekend. As the madam said, my name is LaRue Windham. Not a whole lot I can add to what a lot of these guys said, like Terry, Jimmy, even Ron, me and Ron went to BLAT together, or Jonathan, excuse me, if you will, we worked together in the Sheriff's Office also. I spent 20 years there. You also know me very well by articles in the paper and so forth, that I was accused of double-dipping, which as you kept up, like Mr. Wilburton's sitting here. It never happened. It was proven through four investigations, the FBI, the DA's office, Sheriff's Education Training and Standards, and the Sheriff's Office itself presented no evidence. If that would have happened, folks, I would not be standing here talking to you today. You wouldn't have my paper or my resume in front of you. If you look at my resume, it's quite extensive. I started law enforcement, I'll be back in a second. I'm a fourth-generation cop. My great-granddad, granddaddy, my dad, like you knew my father, Connor Windham, at one time was known as the number-one cop in North Carolina, just because of what he had committed his life to as far as law enforcement. I tried to follow in his footsteps, kind of hard to do when your dad was the man that he was. I spent 20 years with the Sheriff's Office, I started into jail, went to BLAT. Matter of fact, me and Jimmy worked in the jail together. From BLAT, went to the patrol, went through my FTO program, come out with high accolades, was assigned to a platoon. From there, I was sought after to go to narcotics, and I did, became an undercover narc, bought a lot of dope on the streets, even in Riggs Lounge. I was sent to Riggs Lounge to do an undercover campaign, even though very successful with it. There, I went to DARE, Drug Abuse Resistance Education. I taught at DARE in elementary schools, and for four years, and one year in the middle school, which is called middle school now, like in junior high, I'm telling you. There, I went to something that always was in my heart was special operations, or SRT, Special Response Team, which is nothing more than a tactical team. I served there for 13 years, one year as a team leader, 12 years as a team commander. We worked this county, and we worked this county hard. You slept at night because of the men that worked with me, there were 13 of us. And when we were called to a neighborhood or to an area, we fixed a problem, pretty much, each and every day. I did somewhere between 300, 400 tactical operations, that means working with the FBI, DEA, the FBI, anybody with an acronym, make up one, we worked with, to include the IRS, that was on prostitution for not paying our taxes. So just to give you an idea, I've worked with a little bit of everybody. When I left Sheriff's Office, I wasn't in law enforcement for three years, but when I did go back, I went back with the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, I went into prison. From there, I worked a year on the floor, but then somebody got to looking at my resume, said, you know, you like to go to special operations? I said, sure. So that was transfer or transporting high-profile prisoners out of the prison system, courts, medical, whatever it may be. There, I was a training specialist, I started training prison workers. My list is extensive as far as my certifications as a certified instructor. I left there in 2019 and went to probation and parole. So I carried a caseload of about 70 probationers or parolees at a month, went to court a couple, three, four times a month, as required by law, and did what we're supposed to do. I retired from that on May the 1st of 2023. That was 32 years total of law enforcement that I've been in. So it's hard to say, once again, like I said, you have my resume, and I would like to thank you all for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir. At this time, Madam Clerk, we do not have any other applicants, correct? Next, I'd like to first thank all the applicants, one that are present here today, but also those that submitted their information in a timely manner. Thank you for your desire to serve our community and to offer yourself up for service. As a reminder, the actions that we will take today, or the intent of the actions that we'll take today, is that we'll appoint an individual to serve as a Sheriff for Cumberland County for the expired term of retired Sheriff Ennis Wright, which ends in December 2026. We'll approve a surety bond, and we will establish an annual salary. Commissioners, before I move to Commissioners, before I move to any motions, just want to make sure you don't have any questions of the chair or requests of the chair. Mr. Fairclough?
I just have a request to just say one thing. I'd like to thank each and every one of the applicants, and I will say this to the people listening. These nine people answered the call. They gave us their best, the resumes were impressive, every word of them reflected service and a quality of dedication that we would expect in our top law enforcement officer in this county, and every one of them knocked it out of the park. So it was a difficult decision on our part. We gave every consideration to every resume and to every individual, and I think that one will be chosen, but the other eight, we are very, very lucky to have them in some capacity protecting and serving and securing this community. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions of the chair or comments? Okay, again, I just want to echo part of what Commissioner Fairclough said. Again, we appreciate your willingness to serve, your willingness to provide the information to us. Decisions like this are never easy for a board, but it's what we are elected to do and what we're required to do by law. So at this time, I will go ahead and entertain a motion. Vice Chairman Jones, you're recognized.
Yes, I move to appoint Jonathan Morgan to the unexpired term of the duly-elected sheriff, ending December 31st, 2026, as required by the North Carolina General Statute. Second, approve the surety bond with the Ohio Calgerty Insurance Company for the sheriff in the amount of $25,000. And third, establish the annual salary for sheriff in the amount of $195,000, effective on this date, August 11th, 2025.
Is there a second? There's been a motion to appoint Jonathan Morgan to the unexpired term of the duly-elected sheriff, to approve the surety bond and to establish the annual salary effective 11 August at a rate of $195,000. It's been seconded. Are there any questions or discussion on this motion? Are there any questions or discussions on this motion? Board, I'd ask for your vote to appoint Jonathan Morgan to the unexpired term of the duly-elected sheriff, to approve the surety bond, and to establish an annual salary of $195,000. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Board, and thank you again to the applicants. And Major Morgan, congratulations. We will go ahead and move to item five nominations. There are no nominations for this meeting. We'll move to item six, the appointments. We have one appointment we have to make, the ABC Board appointment for the chair. This is pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes, the Board of the Commission shall appoint the chairman. I'd ask, as you're leaving the chamber, if we can just keep the noise to a low level. Shall appoint the chairman of the ABC Board. The ABC Board recommends Terry Thomas as the chairperson for the 25-26 year. Are there any questions or comments on this item, on this appointment? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion from the ABC Liaison Commissioner, Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the privilege and the honor of serving as this Board's liaison to our ABC Board. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Terry Thomas, the ABC Board's recommendation, as the ABC Board Chairman for the 2025-2026 year.
We have a motion to approve Terry Thomas as the ABC Board Chairperson for 25-26. It's been properly seconded. All in favor, are there any questions on that appointment motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move to item seven, closed session, and I'll ask for a motion from Vice Chairman Jones.
I make a motion to go into closed session for attorney-client matter pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A, personal matter pursuant to also NCGS 143-318.11A6, and also real property acquisition pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A. And number five, also economic development pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A4.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion to go into closed session for all the items stated above. Hearing, are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. Please raise your right hand. We're in closed session.
I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to come out of closed session. Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes, a motion to come out of closed session for attorney-client matter pursuant to NCGS 143 Day 318.11A, also personal matter pursuant to NCGS 143-31A.11A6, and also real property acquisition present to NCGS 143-318.11A, and economic development pursuant to NCGS 143
We've got a motion to come out of closed session that's been seconded. All, any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Yes.
And we're back in open session. We had one item of business out of closed session as a personnel action, and I'll entertain a motion from Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes, I make a motion to increase the annual salary of the county clerk, Ms. Andrea Tappy, to $120,000 effective 1st of July 2025.
Second. We have a motion for personnel action, then properly seconded. Any questions on that motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote, please raise your right hand.
Yes.
No other business coming before this body, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
We have a motion to adjourn that's been properly seconded, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Yes.
And we're adjourned. So, that's the process. You can speak with his PIO or the sheriff or with him to get additional details for his swearing-in and next steps. We will probably bring him back in front of our board just for further update from him as a new sheriff. Quick, another update on the emergency shelter. So, we had an RFI that went out, a request for information, and that's looking for the service providers as well as facilities, because what we've found in this community since the closure of Salvation Army is there's not any facilities. And so, we need, we wanted to put that out in a request for information. That closed on August 8th at 5:00 PM. The staff is continuing to review that now, and that will come back to the board as we look at any qualified providers from that RFI. Just as a point, because I think there's some misinformation happening in the community, and so I wanted to make sure the press had accurate information. You know, as we look at our unhoused population, during the winter months, we expanded our cold weather protection with a white flag. We increased that up to $160,000 worth of investment, and we expanded the coverage. When the Salvation Army closed and people transitioned to another facility, and then there was issues in that facility, we immediately with community partners stepped in and began to house over 22-plus families that were without shelter at that point. We spent close to about $100,000. And we spent, spent close to about $100,000 ensuring that those individuals were housed. Additionally, on a, on a good news, on a good story part of that, many of them, some of them, I should say, some of them have transitioned to transitional housing, which is great. That means we've got them in, on the path to stable shelter, a stable place to live. We've also continued to look at how we would increase capacity. That's what this RFI is for. If you recall, we, this board set aside a half a million dollars, a little over a half a million dollars, to partner within the Salvation Army. I believe our commitment in working with community partners, potentially like the city, is to find this emergency shelter and increase this short-term capacity that we need as we continue to work towards the unhoused support center bed capacity that you saw, and that was briefed earlier. We also, as part of our budget cycle, we increased staffing and the administrative support for continuum of care. Continuum of care is the central resource or the central point of contact for our homeless, our unhoused, our unhoused individuals in our community. So, again, we are, we are supporting these efforts in eight months. We've invested dollars, we've invested resources. We, we continue to look to find a, a short-term, intermediate, and long-term solution for this. We are not standing flat-footed. We understand that there are, you know, the temperatures over the recent months have increased. We've had cooling stations during the day. You know, that's why one of the requirements that we were talking with our emergency shelters is it needs to be seven days a week. It needs to have, you know, the capacity to keep people from weather as well. So, we'll continue to look at that, and we'll give you updates as we get, hopefully, a partner for our emergency shelter that meets all the requirements. You heard an update on the unhoused support center. We wanted, Vice Chairwoman Jones wanted to bring that to the board so that we got it all at one time in a timely update, because we didn't meet in the month of July. That committee will continue to work through what you saw today and how we look at that. But you saw a re-scoped project, one that brought it back into the original guiding principles that this project had dating back to 2022, when this was originally discussed. Another update, Crown RFQ, excuse me, so requests for qualifications. We, we have a request for qualifications that the manager will bring forward to the board as part of our ask to look at qualifications for partners to renovate and modernize the Crown Theater and the Crown Arena. You should see that later this month at our work session, which is coming up on the 14th. The Gillespie Street Lot, as I call it now, so where the former parking lot was, our short-term goal continues to look at how we bring back the much-needed parking, public parking, as well as employee parking for the courthouse that we need in that space. The manager is working through some options, and he will bring that back to us this month, so you'll hear more about that as well. Additionally, as I've spoke about before, the Regional Aquatic Center, we will convene initial stakeholder meeting around that this week. Notices are going out. If they have not gone out, they're going out this week. We'll begin to have some preliminary discussions on, on that project as well, and that amenity, much-needed amenity within our community. So, those are a few snapshots of, I know we took July off, I know, you know, I'm sure you missed talking to us, but just wanted to give you an update on, on where we were, on some things that were bubbling forward. There's a lot of other things going on. I just wanted to make sure you are aware of those. So, I will open it up for questions. Yep.
So, what made Major Morgan, to your mind, the best choice for sheriff?
So, I think, as you saw, there was a unanimous board support, and I believe that, you know, as we look to this position, and I will tell you that those decisions to do, to, when you have non-applicants are challenging and difficult, as you heard the board discuss today. For us, it's about continuity, it's about ensuring a smooth transition, and I think you saw that a unanimous support from the board to believe that his, Major Morgan's experience and understanding of the current operations would create that opportunity for us.
I think I misspoke on his name, I apologize on that. But what is, so you, but you spoke on the board's perception, what is Kirk Deavere's perception?
I'm speaking to you as the board chair.
Right. Okay.
And I think you saw my vote. So, my vote would be consistent, as I just said, with the, with the other members of the board, that we felt that there was a continuity of effort there, that would, he would enable a smooth transition. He understands the current operations, he understands the directions that Sheriff Wright had been putting in place, and I think you saw a, again, a collective decision by a board, a unanimous decision, and unanimous support. So, I would lump myself with that.
Okay. On the emergency shelter, you, because you're still in the, getting the bids, so to speak, do you have a timetable on when that'll get, because it's going to be cold in just a few months, so you're going to be able to get that in place?
So, a couple of things. So, it's an RFI, so it's a request for information, so there's no bids. What we're looking for is, we're looking for, we put on a net wide, we actually had to extend it so that we've got some people that submitted requests that were actually qualified, that met the qualifications. So, when we submitted an RFI, request for information, we put requirements in there, qualifications. So, what we're gathering now is those qualifications, and then we'll begin to look at what qualifications are out there, and then we would move towards a bid-type process or look for a provider. Again, I, I will just reiterate that I hear you when you say it's getting ready to get cold, and I strongly agree, which is why we've been moving so quickly with this over the last eight months and have allocated resources, because right now, when the Salvation Army's shut, there is not really a turnkey solution seven days a week that provides the type of space, the type of requirements that you would want for our unhoused population. There's not a turnkey solution in this community right now, which is why we had to go to an RFI. And we're going to continue to look at creative options. Our, our staff has looked at some creative options for how we could do this, but we have to make sure that they're safe, it's in a dignified manner, that they're, you know, controlled from the elements, you know, and there's certain criteria that we want to make sure. The problem still remains when that Salvation, when, when this community, and I, and I will say that while the Salvation Army is ultimately responsible for its closure, this, this community had a responsibility as well to ensure that we didn't lose that resource. And over the years, that funding for that entity decreased, and I won't speak to all the other issues that were identified. It's unfortunate we couldn't move forward with them because of, because of the contract discussion, but we still need to find a, a space in this, in this community that can take care of women and families.
For a, for a cold night-type situation, can the city's Day Resource Center?
So, I can't speak to the Day Resource Center, that's controlled by the city, but I'll remind you, cold nights, that's why we have the white flag. So, we have white flag now. Could we, as a, you know, could we, as a board or as a staff, make some recommendations on how we adjust those policies potentially? Again, in the last eight months, we committed additional dollars to the white flag to make sure that it was a wider coverage, we had more facilities. So, as the nights begin to get colder, as we move forward into the winter, maybe there's some options there, but we do have those resources now. The, the question really becomes, you know, it, it's finding that constant resource that we need in our community, so our unhoused population have a place that they can be away from the elements in a dignified way that's secured, especially with our women and families.
And you're talking beyond just white flag nights, you're like seven, 24/7.
Correct.
Yeah. So, you mentioned earlier you were able to get some families into a safe shelter. What was that? Was it hotels?
No, temporary housing.
Temporary housing.
So, so two things. One, when we transitioned some of those families, 22, 26-plus families, we, we put them in local hotels. That is not an optimal solution by any means, but we were able to do that based on some resources that we, we moved forward and provided. And some of those have now, a few of those families, because there's certain criteria they have to follow, are now, have moved into some transitional housing, which is great, and that's a great new story. That means our community and the community partners work together, and the process worked the way that it's supposed to, and we got those families, hopefully, off the street for good.
Okay. You mentioned the parking lot, and that there's some plans are coming, are those coming in on the Thursday meeting or later this month?
They'll probably, the Gillespie Street Lot, the updates for that will prob, they may come, they'll come on the 25th.
Okay. And that's all I have for, right now?
So, on the emergency shelter?
Mm-hmm.
Can you elaborate a little bit more on the decision to extend that RFI process? I think there was a certain cutoff date, and then that date got extended.
Sure.
And then, do you know roughly, as of this time, how many applicants have, you know?
Thanks for that question. Thanks for the questions. So, a lot of times with RFIs, if you don't get a good applicant pool that are qualified, so you've got to screen out the ones that don't match the criteria within the RFI, and we wanted to make sure that we had a wider pool. And so, staff's recommendation to us was they wanted to send it back out for additional, wider distribution on it, to make sure it got into other networks, as well as we did some, quite frankly, we did some paid advertising behind it to make sure that it was as wide as we could get it, to make sure, we want to have a pool of qualified service providers that met the requirements from the RFI.
And the follow-up on that was, do you know roughly how many people, or how many are being reviewed by the committee?
I, I don't. I, I tend to leave that, let the staff do their work, and then they'll bring that, because they're going to screen out all the ones that don't meet the requirements, and then they'll bring that, they'll bring that forward to us.
And then on the Crown, I may have missed it, but as far as the funding mechanism, you know, with some of the decisions to, to change that, have y'all looked at the updated cost on that and how funding is going to be for that?
So, part of the RFQ will be, we'll have a not-to-exceed cost as part of that request for qualification, so we'll put a not-to-exceed. The manager will make a recommendation for that, and then we'll look at, you know, there'll be a whole different project track, depending on what we're doing, renovation, modernization. We'll continue to look, when we look at funding streams, of course, the, the food and beverage tax is the anchor tax, it's our, or the anchor funding stream that's around updates to the Crown, that's what it was designed for, but we'll look to make sure that we're diversifying those funding streams as much as we can to mitigate the risk.
And final question on the sheriff. Should, you know, election season come around and voters decide differently than how y'all decided today, you know, what would be the step for the county on potentially working with a new person?
I, I think, and I don't want to get into politics, but I would just say that elections happen, that's what makes our democracy what it is. You have three new members on this board as of last year. I, I think we will continue to work with anyone that has the public safety interest, and, you know, that's the purpose of elections, is to elect who the people want. That's what you saw with three new members on this board, and, and so, we'll, we'll see how that process works. Our commitment and our focus is now, is ensuring that smooth transition happens, and that continuity of effort happens with sheriff-elect, or sheriff, whatever the right term is, Morgan, Major Morgan, to ensure that there, it's a very smooth transition and current operations continue, and the momentum that we have seen continues. Anyone else?
A quick follow, and this might be in the, the query y'all put out. How, what would you describe as the basics of what the emergency shelter needs to have, like capacity, square footage, type of beds, if you have, you have like a, like an elevator description of it?
Yeah, and we can provide you a copy of the RFI. I mean, it's publicly out there online, so you can get all that, but I think when we look at that, I mean, you're looking at a space that's secure, a space that provides the right type of living space for the individual that's unhoused, whether it's family or, or women, a secure space, one that is available seven days a week, one that provides access when there's elements that make it difficult.
Would it be a possibility, since the Salvation Army's not doing anymore, to acquire their property, and either your contractor or the county continue on?
So, as you recall, we had conversations with the Salvation Army, and part of the requirements that this board requested of the manager was to ensure that there were some environmental checks done and some health checks. We ran into some issues along those lines, so no matter what would happen over there, those would need to be addressed, or if they could address, and quite frankly, that's a question on whether the Salvation Army and its parent entity would sell or do anything different with their property. We could not reach an agreement with them, which is why our manager recommended termination of the discussions. Anything, anybody else? Thank y'all so much. As always, we appreciate what you do. Please reach out to myself or Diane if you have any follow-up questions or need any clarity for anything. We do appreciate y'all helping us tell our story, and more importantly, tell the facts into our community, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.